I am going to call to order the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, November 15th, 2017. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for all being here, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
I think we all do, Madam Chair.
The two, Kathleen, the two.
Yeah.
Jessica wanted.
The first item on the agenda will be the action on the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes from the open meeting of October 18th, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Paul. So I found just a couple typos.
Okay.
Which are absolutely no big deal. So the G, audience sharing. It said, Mrs. Frank, asked for audience sharing, no one commented. Did you, Mrs. Frank?
No.
I'm like, we're definitely there, but, so that should change. And then the only other thing that's on the list of documents is meeting, number 11. I think it's the M A A C, which is a delegate form.
If we wait long enough, there'll be an M A A C somewhere.
I was just gonna say, unless we discussed an M A A C.
Okay.
And I didn't have a C.
That's a pretty impressive catch, I must say.
Well, M A A C was like, it caught me from across the room. Anyone else?
So I'll change my motion to as amended. As amended.
Still second.
Still second, okay. Any other corrections or discussion? All those in favor? That, and all those abstaining? One, two, three, four, five in favor, one abstention.
Thank you.
On to educational policy, none of us times launching new business. Health and Physical Education Department presentation.
Yes, this is the kickoff of our yearly event of departmental presentations, and Mr. Mossen and his team are ready to dazzle us with information and updates about the health and PE program at Elgin.
Well, let me begin by thanking you for the opportunity to be able to share with you what we do in health and fitness. And I also want to thank you for the work that you do. It has certainly been a privilege over the past 20 years to be a part of such a wonderful learning community, and I look forward to many more, so thank you for that. I also want to thank some of the health and fitness staff that were able to come with me tonight. Make sure they wave to you when I point them out. Mel Festino is right there, Patrick Russell, our newest member Andrew Kinney, so I'm thankful that they could join me tonight. And I know, looking at them, you might be thinking, well, I know what you might be thinking, but there was a time that I did not have the gray highlights. When I was first hired at Elgin, and I certainly did not have these reading glasses, which I'm fighting with, so hopefully I will not have to use them tonight. But anyway, I, again, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you, and really, I want to just mention three things quickly, what we've been up to, what we do, and where we are heading. So that said, over the past two years, we've been able to establish solid health and fitness courses for each grade level to accommodate our state mandate. We've also been able to maintain our CPR SMART status with the American Heart Association. We've been able to initiate the first-ever Elgin Health and Wellness Committee, which we're excited about, to look at the health and wellness of our faculty, our staff, students, the whole community. And then also, with the help of Mike Gorman, we've been able to begin transitioning our ropes course off of trees and onto poles. So that's been a good endeavor as well. Oh, thank you. No pun intended, but we'll head off of the ropes course and swing into our curriculum. Our health and fitness curriculum is very simple. It consists of four courses, Health and Fitness 9, 10, 11, and 12. Health and Fitness 9 is designed for incoming freshmen. The design of our Health and Fitness 9 program is to acclimate them to Elgin, and also to help them to develop fitness concepts, fitness skills, that will carry them not only through high school, but also as they leave Elgin. And you can see, they do a number of activities. The picture is a group of excited freshmen, ready to hit the archery range. Our sophomores take Health and Fitness 10, and our Health and Fitness 10 is really about helping students navigate through health issues that face adolescents. And you can see, our health program, our Health and Fitness 10 covers numerous topics, from nutrition to mental health. They also have opportunity, one or two days a week, to do some fitness activities. Our Health and Fitness 11 program is my favorite. I actually teach this program. Our Health and Fitness 11 is really focused on team building, helping students to be able to work in a group setting, though we do certainly more than that, as you can see on the slide. And if you see the picture, that's one of our classes, ready to go hike the trails around our campus. That takes us to our final course, our Health and Fitness 12 course, set up for our seniors. Our Health and Fitness 12 course is designed to help get our students ready as they leave the halls of Elgin, as they head into the real world, to help them be prepared as they head into college, to live a life of health and fitness. It's also designed to give them some fun as they finish out their high school experience at Elgin. And if you notice, believe it or not, that is a senior class doing yoga, so they do some neat things and some fun things in the class. Thinking of seniors, I have an all-star cast with me that I'm going to bring up shortly. In fact, I'll borrow student language, I brought the varsity club with me over there. They're going to join me soon, but before they come up, I'm going to cross my fingers. I have two videos that I'd like to show you, two very short video clips that are really neat. The first one is a junior jumping for the trapeze on our ropes course. The second is done by some sophomores, actually last year's sophomores. It's a public service announcement dealing with stress. So, here we go.
He's not gonna get up, he's high.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Almost made it. Almost.
And a little video from our health program here as well. 10 program, so that's why it was set up that way. Well, at this time, I am going to have my seniors come up. I'll let them introduce themselves. You guys can go in any order. Thank you so much for joining me. They're going to just share a little bit about their experience in our program.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Ethan Ash. I'm a senior here at Elgin. Obviously, I took gym all four years. I actually think my grade was one of the first grades that gym was required all four years. Before we came, it was only required for two or three years, I forget which. But I can honestly say, every time I went to gym class every day, I enjoyed every second of it. I consider myself a pretty active individual. I play football and baseball, I even did track one year, and I still valued my time every day in gym, because I think regardless of whether you're active every day, with or without gym, it can still give you that opportunity to kind of get away from the classroom, which can be really stress and like very claustrophobic for some people, and it allows you to enjoy other aspects that we can still learn from, like nature, like social aspects that we may not get the opportunity to have in the class. So just some things like that, on top of the actual creative games that we play, just kind of keep my mind rolling, and they allow me to stay as productive as possible for the rest of my day.
So I'm Kaylee Reynolds, I'm a senior as well, and I've also been in gym for four years now, and it's always been a class I look forward to during the day. Like, when I don't have gym one day, I'm like, oh, God, I have double math instead, like, this sucks, like, oh, my God. But my favorite unit out of all my four years was, had to be project adventure. I had Mr. Mossen, and I was always on the high elements. I was always the first one to shoot my hand up as soon as he said, who wants to go first on the trapeze? I would always just raise my hand, and he always knew that I'd always go up for him.
Hey, guys, I'm Emily, I'm also senior, went through the same program as them. So I think in the classroom, like Ethan was saying, like, things are serious, and it's all about college, it's all about stress, and it's all about the next step, but in gym, it was sort of like, an environment that it was cool to like, try hard, but not necessarily at something like academic. It was more, it was like such a different type of interaction with, I don't know, the people in my school. It was more social, and like, it was good to laugh, or it was good to just do whatever. Like, it was a very open environment for creativity. And this year, I have Ms. Morcone. Last year, I had Mr. Mossen, good days in the ropes course, that was amazing. And this year, I have Ms. Morcone, and I'm finding myself talking to people that I just like, don't in any of my other classes. Like, one, because it's required for everyone, so you don't see that like honors, CP, AP split between students who just like, never interact. It was students who like, I had never had in any of my classes, and now we were like, passing the soccer ball to each other, which is really cool, because like, I don't know, I just enjoy that, that time that I get to have with like, everyone in my grade, rather than just, you know, people that I'm normally placed with. So yeah, good times, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Maybe we can give them a little round of applause. Thank you so much for coming tonight. In conclusion, I mentioned about where we're heading. Certainly, we want to enhance what we have at the school, at the high school. We live in an ever-changing culture, so we want to look to adapt our program to meet the needs of incoming students, to meet the needs and the pressures that exist today. We want to continue to promote the importance of health and fitness at every grade level, and hopefully, we'd like to bring back our elective program, so we're kind of working on that as well. And certainly, look forward to working with our new administrator, new administrative team. They've already been very supportive and helpful with our program, so we're excited about that as well. Didn't know if anyone had any questions that you wanted to ask about our program, what we're doing.
Always questions. Any questions or comments?
I got a question. How do you handle skiing and snowshoeing?
We do a snow dance, first of all, in the fall, and I want actually to get a snowmaker. We've had some tricky semesters, so I want to put that in the budget. Anyway, either that or for snow days, that was the other conversation. The fall is tough, because at least in recent years, it's been a little challenging, but we do hopefully do our snow dance in the certainly second semester. When I first started teaching, we, you know, it wasn't so tough with snow in the fall, but in the past few years, it's been a challenge, you know, to have snow sufficient enough to be able to ski. But when we do get the snow, it is a great program. Once you get the students out there, that's always the tricky part, getting them ready and prepared. But we ski the fields, we ski in the woods. We have snowshoes as well. Sometimes, if we have a double class, we may alternate with snowshoeing and skiing. It's a treat seeing me ski, that's just an added benefit that they get to experience. But it's a really great program. We size them up, we have a whole array of equipment that we've been able to acquire. So we size the students, we have it ready, they come down, they get their skis on, we head out and come in, and it's really an awesome program. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. The hardest part is making sure we have enough snow, but it's a great program.
I'd like to thank you for your presentation, and also the students for giving up their time, and they didn't seem to be too stressed out, calling the course, you're appearing eloquent in your speaking. And I noticed that when you smiled, you said that, you know, we're not following the mandates by the state for the phys ed classes, and it's nice to see that the kids are also supporting that mandate by their enthusiasm for the classes, and it's nice to see also the social interaction with other peers that you may not have at any other time, and you're able to cheer each other on support, and so it's really wonderful. And then my last comment was, you mentioned, as we go into the budget season, you said that you like electives, you would like to develop more on electives. What would those electives be?
Well, we're looking at, we actually have now an elective that, we're doing a weight training elective next semester, and so we're working towards within our own program to sort of have some electives with the resources that we have, and create some options within the class structure. So right now, we have four set programs that students go through, but within the class structure, like our seniors, when we have dual classes on, they have an elective environment at times, so. But at present, it's been more experimental, so we're kind of looking at our existing program and how we might be able to build the electives within the resources that we have, to be able to have students have some choices, especially our seniors. So they can be within some of the content that we have. So that's kind of what we're looking at as a department, how we might bring in some electives. I know our seniors now, our senior teachers now, are actually doing that within their classes, but again, it's kind of more of an experimental point. So hopefully, as we forge ahead, we might be able to bring some different options within our program for students, more options, they have some now already, but just to kind of build off of that, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also applaud Brian and the members of his department. While we focused on jumping off trees, and that was a scary sight, which would bring about the stress balls and all of that, Brian's department really does play a key role in addressing some of the topics that we've been talking about in terms of the health curriculum. And over the last couple of years, he and his members spent a lot of time working on a K-12 level to bring the curriculum up to where we are in the 21st century. I think we mentioned last week at the presentation that the state has not refreshed that curriculum since 1999, but that didn't hold, you know, Elgin and the districts back from doing what was right, which was refreshing and bringing current topics and issues to the forefront, and that forefront is the classroom. So all about making better choices, healthy choices, whether it's on a social, emotional, physical, or personal level. I think that's a really important piece, and it's evidenced by the fact that you are teaching them a very important life skill, by the partnership that we've enjoyed for years with the American Red Cross, and with CPI and so forth. So thank you for that piece, and with all of the conversations that we've had, and all of the great work that this administration and the high school is undertaking to partner with our school community around substance abuse and so forth, the health curriculum is always someplace we look for guidance and for opportunities for our students to learn more about making better decisions, so. Thank you.
So on that note, given everything that has been coming out around stress and stress reduction, what, I mean, I was, there's too many things on your slides, you do so much. What, how do you approach topics like mindfulness, and meditation, and things like that that are coming out as being absolutely scientifically proven to reduce stress? Is there a way we address that in schools?
So with our, more so with our sophomores and our seniors, they do a lot of things, yoga, all different things within the classroom, some mindfulness strategies they bring in. So as we think of the whole program, I guess there's a lot of that within there, with just helping students navigate through the stressors of life, helping students, even, you know, I love what Emily mentioned, even laughing. Laughing is such a medicine, you know, and so, so it's built within the whole program, connecting with kids, talking with kids, speaking to their lives about different things as you do different activities. But then, there's some formal things done in our sophomore program, some formal things done in our senior program, to help students with the different stressors that they have, and to build off, to have some relaxation techniques that they can do every class period, not even in hours, just at the beginning before they take a test. And so, we're just kind of weaving that in as best we can, and I'm appreciative of, I know Melissa wanted to be here with us, but certainly appreciative of what Melissa is initiating within our sophomores, along that lines, some of the things that she's bringing in, and it's a very different look than it was when I first started here, you know, and, but we want to stay up on what's taking place. I mean, you know, I think of even the sexting and the texting, it didn't exist when I first started here, so, so we're building off of that, and those, one of the things, the mindfulness, and helping students emotionally deal with struggles, more so within those two programs, but certainly, they're weaved into the others as well, just as we help kids decompress when they come down to our program.
Well, at one point, I mean, my kids are gone, but at one point, did, and I know this wasn't probably under your purview, but was there a, like, a voluntary yoga class during lunch periods, or was there a room that people could go do yoga?
So there was a volunteer yoga. That was actually a joint initiative with guidance.
Okay.
And so, we had yoga at lunch, for students to come down on a voluntary basis. We also are fortunate at times, we have the opportunity for students to access the weight room during the day as well, to kind of decompress, and so that's something we have at present. The lunchtime yoga kind of went away, but, but the weight room is still available, not every period, but we're able to use that, so, but that was a joint initiative that we had at lunchtime.
Great. I heard great things about it, so.
Yeah.
Well, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I know that both my boys were, their favorite class was always gym. I was like, you cannot say that on a college application. But it's true, I'm like, alright. So good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the report on standardized test results.
Yes, I would like to applaud the work of Tim McDonald, our assistant principal at the high school, for preparing a snapshot of some of the formative assessments that our students take each and every year, and in November, usually they're, the results are here, and we share it with the school committee. And again, our students are performing at high. Some of what we have is.
Some highlights.
Some highlights from these that make up the snapshot of our students' performance in AP exams, ACT, SAT, and MCAS. Starting with the AP exam results, looking at the table here, you can see the percent of our students who took the AP exam and scored three or higher in the exam, and how that would compare to the state and the nation. So you can see, Elgin students continue to surpass the state average in the AP exam performance. Also to note, we had 395 students take AP exams last year. Moving to the ACT results, they were improved over the previous four years in all categories, English, math, reading, and science, and a composite. Our students have demonstrated that they also far surpassed the college readiness benchmarks in all sections of the AP test. They set the benchmarks that you can see at the bottom of the table, at certain scores in each category. So if you compare the 2017 scores to those, you can see how well we perform against that. On the SAT test results, just to point out, first of all, our students also outperformed state and national averages in performance in the SATs. The SATs do have a new format that they've implemented in the past year or so, so the 2017 score averages are what they call concorded, meaning they have a combination of the score from the old format and the new format. Down below that, you see, there is a gender analysis, and I do want to point out, too, as you look at those numbers, that the gender breakdowns represent the 2017 cohort graduating class, while the scores you see above that are for all testing of Elgin students in that 2016-17 school year. So if you add up those total, you might see some different scores, and that's the reason why. I'm going to flip to the next page here for our MCAS performance. And our students continue to have success in the MCAS, and have managed to maintain a 97% proficient or higher performance in ELA, 93% proficient or higher in math, and 94% proficient or higher in science the past two years. Below that, you'll see charts comparing four of our graduation cohorts, and their growth progression from third grade through 10th grade, if applicable, in the MCAS. And so what you're seeing there is their percent of proficient or higher from year to year, between third and 10th grade. So one thing I want to point out there, you'll see, there is one spot where the data's missing, because last year, we went to MCAS 2.0 in eighth grade, and the number is just, it's a much different measurement with the new testing format, so it was something that I felt would leave out of the chart, because it doesn't really go with the other years of that cohort. Let's see. So I will note, it's good to see that a high percent of students are able to perform at proficient or higher levels on the grade 10 MCAS consistently, because you can see where in third grade, we have a progression from somewhere in the 70s percent proficient or higher, up to where we have our rates that show that our students are successful. And last thing I want to point out is that we'll be preparing for the inception of the MCAS 2.0 at the grade 10 level for spring of 2019. And thank you, and I don't know if you have any questions?
So how did the, how did, what's the differences that we're looking forward on the 2.0, MCAS 2.0? How does it differ from the previous version?
Well, I can maybe let Rick Martin know into that, too, but I understand that it's largely computer-based, is one of the big differences.
Oh, okay.
It's supposed to be more rigorous, text analysis. I think it's more aligned to this newly adopted standards, but what we found was, the big change was paper-based to computer-based, and the rigor is greater.
But the content, so it still goes along with the curriculum, it's not, they're It's not, they, there's not going to be a catch-up to that? They should be kind of ready for it?
Yeah, yeah.
The Common Core standards have been in place for a couple of years now, so they would be aligning with those.
Joe?
Thank you very much for the presentation and the data. Our students have always excelled in whatever task we give them, so also applaud the students for their hard work and the number that took the AP scores, the test. That's pretty impressive. I liked on the back page for the MCAS, the progression achievement, because we always look, it counts when they get to high school, and, not that it doesn't count in the lower grades, but there is just that learning curve that is going on when the test gets harder in the, in the fourth grade, when they have more demands on their writing skills to put. So I really appreciate seeing how they grow and, and how, you know, we don't want them to be all mastering at the fourth grade, but it's nice to see that all the hard work from kindergarten up, when they get here, it all blends in and gets together, and they're maturing more, their brain and everything is. So I really appreciate this, and Christine, I don't know, it might help that the K to eight levels is to give this.
Oh, we do.
I mean, to see this chart, so that parents know when the, when that fourth grade test comes in and it's a lot harder, they, everything that they require them to do. And when you think, oh my gosh, my child is not proficient, that's okay, don't worry. When they get to 10th, 11th, and 12th, we'll get them there, so.
That's a good point, and that's really where we started, to just show that the K, the progression at the K8 level, that in the end, it's a journey, it's not, it's just a snapshot in time, and, and here's, you know, the, here are the results at the end of the, of that road. And so it's very helpful to use as a tool when we're having conversations for exactly the same reasons that you've identified. And so that's been a lot of our conversation. And we try, we do track the same students, so it does show their growth over time as well in some of our projections. And, and with respect to the computer test, the high school is the last to implement the computer-based version of the new MCAS 2.0. So we actually piloted that a year ago, and this year, I think they're all taking it on computers, grades three through eight.
Correct, so the current freshman, last year's eighth grade, will be the first cohort of kids to take the computer-based assessment, so they'll have had some experience with a computer-based.
Thank you.
So pages won't get stuck together in accidentally with a whole page?
As long as the keys don't.
Stuck with all kids. And all of a sudden, she was being recommended for summer school.
One of the nice thing about the computer-based assessment too is accommodations are built into the environment, of the testing environment, and they're available to all kids, not just kids who may need, you know, a bookmark. So it's much more accessible to all kids.
So the 10th graders, right, that take it?
Correct, yep.
This year? So are they, will you make them aware that it's going to be a computer? Will they be like doing math problems on paper to put it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just had a conversation with my daughter because she was taking a history quiz on the computer, and she freaked out because she couldn't go back to fix one of her answers. So she's like, I, she likes paper.
And we did observe many students using paper and pencil to solve the problems.
So they can, okay.
So they can do that.
But overall, last year, it went really well. Our tech team was phenomenal at all of the.
And the glitches are like gone, like as far as the computer's freezing or whatever?
Yeah, it, it was relatively smooth.
We had a few glitches, but the glitches were quickly resolved or identified for resolution, so.
Paul?
If I could, I mean, as always, we just kicked the results, this is just a reference, the school does it year after year after year. I'm wondering, is, is, is the, the SAT results for 2017 are, are nuts as compared to the three or four years prior to them? And, I mean, they went from 550 in reading up to 607 in one year. I mean, that's just statistically really meaningful, 565 in math up to 599. I mean, two numbers at the 600 level, I, I think that's just astounding. But I also noticed that the math, the Massachusetts scores, we, we don't have prior years, but for Massachusetts to have caught up with us as we were in 2016, say, in reading, I mean, I wondered, did, did all of the SAT scores go up, you know, kind of across the board in 17, or? I mean, typically, in, in years past, we would always be better than the state average, and yet the state average is the same as ours was for 2016, 2015, 2014, but all of a sudden in 2017, we kind of blow by it. I'm just wondering if the, is there a, I mean, is there a, a standard that has changed or shifted, or are you guys hearing anything about that, or am I just, we were just having a terrific year? Did they all go up? Do we know what Ma, what Massachusetts numbers were in years prior?
I don't, I don't have the numbers from Massachusetts in the prior years, but I do know that, as we mentioned, they did change the format of the SATs as well, so, I mean, I could only guess that our students were well-equipped to be able to handle those changes to the new format.
I mean, terrific, 600s. I mean, 600s, as, as just kind of the average, that's, that's really, that's really commendable. Everybody involved, you know, deserves our kudos and thanks and admiration for just continuing to deliver such terrific numbers. Thanks.
Any more questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me again.
We always enjoy this presentation every year, especially when these numbers are so good. Update on MASC, MASSS Joint Conference?
John Kane is not here this evening. He was the delegate-elect at the MASC conference. Greg and myself and John were fortunate enough to attend the conference, and this year I, I found it particularly interesting, not that it's not interesting every year and enjoyable, but this year, they, they did spend a lot of time, I felt, on the regional school configuration, and that was, really came to light with the presentations that were offered. I know in the packet, I sent in a separate email to the regional committee, some of the links that were provided on the presentations, and there are more coming. The presentations were particularly meaningful for us because they were talking about things like rebonding, which we talked about last year, and we will be talking more about that in December. Christine Tagg has done some work around what that might look like in terms of savings if we were to rebond, and we are meeting with David Eisenthal, our, our bond counsel, next week to take a look at that. And she will be here to present the, the outcome, but also to the regional subcommittee, budget subcommittee, when we meet in June. There was also some aha moments about what the bond council looks for in terms of rating regional schools that I thought were particularly enlightening, and there were points specific to assumptions that we make about what if we, you know, create an OPEB line item and, you know, so what are the kinds of things from Moody's perspective that would make us more attractive in terms of our rating and in terms of our borrowing capability? And so I think we're going to get a little bit more into that at the regional subcommittee as part of our conversation, and then again, bring that forward to the school committee in December as we begin to launch our budget cycle. There is, however, an excellent YouTube video of the presentation. The link just came through Mars, and I'll be sending that off to you. Things like, they know that OPEB has been a problem for some time. This is not a new reality to them, so the fact that we're all talking about it doesn't necessarily immediately translate into a concern about the, the stability and the financial stability of regional districts. Rather, for example, they are more concerned with seeing things like an awareness factor by the regional committee that we at least are voting a stabilization line item even if we put no money into it. Because to them, that means we are aware that this isn't impending and, you know, a situation that we need to be paying attention to, but they also recognize that funding it is not always feasibly possible. So those were sort of some aha moments. I think one of the other points that they raised, which we'll be talking a little bit more about, is the notion that as a regional school committee, having policies that set parameters around E and D numbers, we know we can, it's 5% as a cap, but what is the policy that the committee puts forth that we can refer to in budget season in terms of range of expected E and D per year? So they look for those policies in place to say, we're cognizant of our financial responsibilities and our self-funding, if you will, in terms of an E and D account. So some tangible things that we can do that really aren't costing us money, that would position us better in, in the eyes of a bond counsel. So we'll be talking a little bit about that. There were two other particular presentations that I, I thought were very meaningful for us, and again, hadn't seen them before. One presentation was actually by two school committee members, and it was unbelievable. It was on municipal financing and municipal financial reports. And so it, you know, it's, it, to me, I, I sat through it and I thought, oh, I'm sort of at the Wizard of Oz, it was that exciting. I just threw my paper clip. I was just completely in awe. And it was what the town looks like at when they start preparing its budget. And so we often hear about the fiscal realities of a town as presented as facts and final, right? So this gives us a sort of a guide and some insight into things like minimum local contribution, which we sometimes think is a mysterious number, and what does it mean? So the presentation, which also I'll be sharing with you folks, was, was by two school committee members from Massachusetts. And there is a report that we can ask them to prepare, and I, I would like to have that happen for both the town of Northborough and for the Southborough budget discussions. It's, it's sort of a one-time preparation of a 20-page report, which they actually will come to committee and present. And it's the financial realities of what goes into creating town budget, and then, of course, the impact on a school budget. If done once, we have the template and we can continue to refresh the data each and every year. So hopefully we'll, we'll move forward. They've also, they've already compiled some of the Northborough and Southborough numbers, which for us, it's important to have both because of a report that they had to present to the state auditor's commission. With that, Mars invited Auditor Bump to attend one of our presentations, and she has a recommendation and a report that's out there, it's about 70 pages, on funding regional school systems. And there is, I think I provided the link to that. It's interesting read, and it really does, I think, send a very positive note to the regional schools that the legislature does recognize that we are very different and our needs are very different. And so they have come through with some very tangible findings, none of them are a surprise to us, regional transportation, circuit breaker. But the fact that it's risen to this level and people are paying that much attention, I think, is encouraging. So that's more to come. And lots, lots of time on chapter 70, really digging a little bit more deeply into chapter 70 and what it's all about. I've handed you this evening PowerPoint presentation, and the speaker was none, none other than our former Tracy Novick, who was an English teacher here at Algonquin. And she is now on the board of MASC at the state level. So that's interesting reads. There were many other workshops, but for us, I think that was really meaningful and something tangible that we could bring back to improve our practice in these areas. Also in your packet, we always like to see what our legislature is up to. Here's a copy of some bills that they may get to this year, and that was provided to you. There are no less than 50, so we'll see how many come out of either the House or Senate, some form of take action. All of them are, I hate to say recycled topics, but they basically are. They may have reordered them, but it's the same. There is a very, I think what is an excellent document summarizing the Foundation Budget Review Commission's major recommendations. We talk about the work of the FBR Commission, and we've made frequent reference to it since they began their work about three or four years ago. But I think this document prepared by MASC is particularly outstanding because it just put, it's a nutshell. There it is. These are the things we're talking about, these are the things we need the legislature to move on, because they will have the most impact on our budgets. And with that, again, familiar topics, you'll see a document that identifies some of the Massachusetts community, communities that have submitted the underneath letter, which is a recommendation letter of, of MASC, to the legislature, supporting the recommendations that are summarized in the prior document. I might want to suggest that the committee consider sending a similar letter to our legislatures. And again, we can take this up for consideration this evening and then take action, if it's the will of the committee to send a similar letter like these other communities. Obviously, Mars and MASC is encouraging every district to consider this. We know more voices might be heard when sharing the same message. And we did take this up, we will be taking this up in our two-member towns as well. And Paul did some research. Both of us thought we had already done this once before, and we did send a similar letter on charter schools, and we did take some action that we supported the recommendations and the findings of the, the Foundation Budget Review Committee, but this is just one more send if we choose to do that, or an email to Tracy reminding her that we already took the vote.
Right. We did pass a resolution that was very similar to this.
Right.
We actually, more selectmen than the advisory committee all did the same thing. And we sent a letter to Governor Baker telling him that, but I guess I never sent a letter to Tracy Novick so that we could make this list.
Right.
So then we don't need to.
Did the region send it too?
I think the region took a similar vote, yeah, because we actually brought it to all three committees with the signatures. But one more letter is one more letter, and maybe it'll end up on somebody else's desk that might happen to read this, who might happen to have some ability to move this forward.
So do you want to?
So here's our motion?
Paul?
I move that we approve the sending of this letter encouraging the legislature to endorse and, and without further delay, approve the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission.
Second. By Paul's or by Paul? Paul. I suggest that we change, we the ex-school committee to our school committee, but any questions, comments? Okay? All those in favor of sending the letter? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the last legal alert, which I'm sort of morphing three and four together because so much of what we did at MASC and MASSS Conference was in fact legal issues, is yet one more change to the open meeting law, and I think, or several changes to the open meeting law. And I think the one unnerving update that we particularly noted was the amount of time that public bodies have to submit and release meeting, meeting minutes. Fortunately, at the end of last year, we approved all of the minutes from all of the meetings, including any subcommittee meeting that hadn't met since September because we couldn't meet to approve. And so we are current on all of the meetings that we had last year in subcommittee, and so we hope to keep that process this year. But they've given somewhat of a time limit, and they also talked a little bit about remote participation. South, we, it is difficult for us to have remote participation because Northborough does not have a policy on remote participation and does not support it. So in checking with our town administrator and clerk in Northborough, that potentially could prohibit region from having remote participation. So I'm going to double-check on that after this. Southborough's fine, but it was the region in Northborough's desire not to participate remotely in meetings that prevented us from doing that. So I'm going to double-check on that again with these changes to see if it made a difference, but it was an interesting read.
Paul?
Back to the refinancing, the bond and bondholders, looking for policies about our expectations around excess and deficient, as opposed to just like a history of, you know, we always kind of come in under, we always have some money there. They want a policy that says we're going to anticipate that and. They want a policy that says we're going to anticipate that, and...
So, it was interesting, because when Christine Kurteg, our new treasurer, presented and actually joined our district, one of the things that she asked about was whether we had, it's a target fund balance policy. So, I'm reading that right from the PowerPoint. And when the bond council raised this as something that they would consider very favorable, I remembered that she had commented on that when, I think, we had even interviewed her. And so, when we look at the PowerPoint, it is, it's sort of a management plan, and they're calling it a formal policy to indicate that the school committee desires a certain percent of budget to be a fund balance. So, somewhere, you know, their recommendation was two and a half to 3% should be funded in E and D. And what was interesting is there were several of the regionals, including our district, that had a conversation about what happens when you return money to lower the town's assessments. And so, it was an interesting conversation as to how they look at that in relationship to your target percent of fund balance. And I think, you know, worth digging a little bit more deeply into at the regional subcommittee meeting, and perhaps even looking at the actual presentation, a snippet of that on that topic. They seem to have two opinions. Well, if it's a practice, and it's something that there's a history to, it seemed like they were not as favorable towards that practice as it would be if it was a situational reality because of the fiscal constraints in the two towns, or any member towns, in any given year. So, it was an interesting conversation and a different, you know, perspective on something we do ordinarily as practice. Last year, when we were in budget subcommittee, we had a conversation, and at the budget meetings here, we had a conversation about, you know, what we wanted to do with that going forward, that that was our practice, because we're concerned about our E and D balance. So, those conversations have been going on with our two town administrators, and they appreciate the fact that, I don't know to what extent they appreciate it, but at least they know that we are having this conversation, that E and D is below where we'd like to have it. And so, that's part of, I think, this year's budget conversation as much as the FY '19 budget, because we do have some, you know, discussions about the bond. We do have some discussions about the recommendations that we haven't really talked about before. And then, do we want to establish some financial policies? And I could see them being helpful when and if we have a conversations with the town about not wanting to necessarily provide that amount of money to reduce the assessments, and having a policy to be able to say, and this is a policy that we sort of set a standard around it. We appreciate those funds are important for us for unanticipated expenses, and that's where we go to. So, to be able to say, you know, we're looking at funding that balance around a 3% is important. It's good language to have in place. I don't know to what extent it's going to be meaningful, but...
It seems odd for it to be a policy. You know, I mean, it almost seems to infer that if you finish a year, and maybe we can talk about this in the budget subcommittee, not here, but, I mean, if you finish the year with just one and a half percent in E and D, I mean, do you build your next year's budget and add two more percent to it because you're striving for a 3 and a half percent number? I mean, that's just going to raise assessments. It, you know, this is just kind of the money that we're fortunate enough not to spend at the end of the year, because, you know, the administration is constantly trying to economize in one way or another, or, you know, there's open positions that don't get filled, you know, one thing or another. And it just seems like a funny number to policy build into your budget.
Well, they call it a target balance.
Well, and if it's just, if it's just a nice-to-have, a wishless sort of thing, then I guess it's probably immaterial, other than they want it written down somewhere. But, you know, I think I'd want to explore that a little more. I mean, it's an interesting idea, and I love the idea of refinancing the bond. I think that's pretty intriguing.
Well, as far as like having a target percentage, I mean, back when I was on the appropriations committee in Northborough, it was always constant talk about that the town would subsidize the operating budget to the $200 million. And it was, and so, over time, they've decreased, they still do it to some extent, but I think it's down to like $500,000, and then the rest they use to pay for capital project, like with cash. So, I mean, I think that is something like the bond agencies would be looking at. I also sat on the debt policy committee as the school committee's representative to that committee. And so, we had, so the town of Northborough came up with certain, you know, policy goals as to like attack the debt percentage of the, all sorts of percentages and ratios that they wanted to use for, to evaluate capital, the total capital budget per se, what was available. So, I mean, it is good financial practice. It's something that I've always, so always know that I always ask, how much is left? Because I don't want to, like, you know, I don't have a percentage in my head, but there's kind of like, you know, we have a few thousand dollars, a few hundred thousand left, you know? Because I, you know, usually we'll replenish that by the end of the year, and we'll realize, you know, that we didn't save, we didn't spend as much money. So, then, you know, if we are able to look at what our E and D balance is, like, when you're doing the budget, you're subtracting the money from the E and D, but it's not even taking into consideration what's going to come forward that year. So, you know, we could end up, if we look at it, I don't know the numbers, but we may have been at somewhat, you know, it would be interesting to see how that end number always ends up to be, even though we budgeted it, did we replenish it in that current year? There's other methods you kind of do it to replenish it besides. But, you know, ultimately, that percentage that we might have in our head that we want, and then we want to put down on paper, you know, it'd be interesting to see if we've kind of done that in our, just by our back-of-the-envelope kind of planning.
And to Paul's point, and Lynn's, it may not be about, as much about language that suggests how much we save each year, but rather than a number that we don't want to go below, which would then mean our assessment returns to the town, it's a very different conversation, because doing X means we fall below our target of maintaining a 3% E and D balance.
Right.
So, that balance is created over time, and to deplete that or reduce that significantly below X percent in one given year is not fiscally prudent, because it takes X amount of time to replenish it.
Right.
So, to have that language in place and say, you know what, we can't give anything this year towards that, because it's going to get us below what is the most desirable percent.
Right.
So, that's, you know, I think probably where it would be most helpful for us.
Yeah, different spin. Got it.
Any other questions? Is that also the legislative aspect?
Yes, two. Yeah, moving along. Lots, two checks.
A couple of grants and donations.
And fortunately, and sadly, we lost a member of our Algonquin community this year. Many of us remember Neil Cronin, taught on Sea Corridor many, many, many years, always traveled with a guitar and a song in his heart, and oftentimes on his lips. Wherever we went, Neil had a song, and it was usually some creative little ditty about somebody who or something that was going on at the school, in the world, or with a staff member. And he was much beloved. We were contacted by a number of people at Central Office when Neil passed, and it was decided by the family that they would like all of the contributions in his memory to go to support Algonquin Community High School Athletics. He was a big part of our athletic program. He was a coach at one time, tennis coach, right? And he, he just loved to support the kids, all students, but definitely our athletics.
He was attending as many games as possible up until he became Neil. So, he was a constant basis.
Paul.
So, I move that we very gratefully accept the contribution of $1,180 to the Algonquin Regional High School Athletics in memory of Neil Cronin.
Second. Moved by Paul Butka, seconded by Joe. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you to Neil's family. 2018-19 school calendar discussion.
We're looking at one another to say, who wants to start this with you? So, we did have a combined meeting when, I think, this month was an eight meeting in the span of four, four and a half weeks. We've had eight school community meetings. And we did have a very lengthy conversation about the school calendar for 2018 and 19. We did have an opportunity for quarms, K8, Northborough and Southborough. Right. And we had significant audience participation, significant being more than one some nights for us, but it was well-attended, and folks did come forward and share their perspective on any proposed calendar changes. It was decided at that meeting because of the complexity of the conversation and our desire and intent to take this up for consideration at the December combined meeting, that we bring this forward to each of the three school committees. So, this was taken up for consideration at the Southborough meeting last week, region, and then it'll be on the Northborough agenda when we meet first Wednesday in December. It will come back to combined for consideration by the full combined membership, and at that point, we hope that we will be able to take a vote. It has been suggested by Mr. Desmond, I believe, that we go back and sharpen our pencils and take a look at perhaps relocating some of our professional development days, so that regardless of the outcome of the vote, our professional development days are not necessarily embedded in the calendar as we see it, or at least not all of them are embedded in the calendar. So, we intend to do that. I'm getting input from the associations on Friday to have that conversation about what, where, and when can we relocate our professional development days. We conducted three surveys, and I think overall, we probably received 12, maybe 1,100 responses, maybe over 1,100 responses from our parent community. The survey did ask, have you taken the survey before? So, we trust that when they said no, that it was a first-time submission. And what you have is a very succinct and brief analysis of some of the more pertinent survey information that we have. We did get a lot of comments. There was a comment block in all three surveys, and they were as diverse as our communities are becoming, and there was no specific point that was raised in the comments section other than can we do something around professional development days and embed them not necessarily in the school, the 180 student calendar, but in the, you know, the broader 185 calendar that our teachers follow, which includes five PD days. So, two notes. We have 40 districts that we surveyed, I believe this is 40, and looked for religious observances embedded in their calendars. The summary is included in the packet. The totals are on the bottom line, and in most cases, it's a split between the number of districts that we interviewed.
I think what we found is that the further west you go of Boston, the less schools observe the Jewish holidays, or Catholic holidays for that matter, versus the closer you're Boston you are. There's like a cutoff, I'd say 45 probably.
It's probably us.
Us, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It really is. Like, if you look at the Blackstone Valley.
Not at all. So, south of Worcester County, really, you know, the Worcester County area, the further west you go.
They don't do anything.
No. But certainly in our area.
Yeah.
East. Everyone had an opinion about what we should do with February and April. There was no consistent theme, and that was interesting. And I did say to the committee that I would be happy and will be sharing sort of the other comments with the committee, just so they can review them as well. And we also included the number of PD days that, for the most part, districts have in their school calendars, and they range, but the average is four. And interestingly enough, over the last five days, the average number of snow days or no-snow days, Brian would be happy to hear this, was four. So, they will be skiing the day after those snow days, and we're back in session. So, that's the average snowfall. Then, the other document in your packet shows the results. The questions are basically the same, but we sort of mixed up the way in which we asked the questions, so that we could see if the response was consistent in either format. We had a spring survey, and we had a fall survey for parents and teachers. So, good information, lots of information received, but really, this is, this is really what it comes down to in terms of concerns.
Has, can I? That's good. Auburn has a three-day during February vacation. Is that new for them, or have they done that for a while? Do we know?
I'm curious.
I think it's new. Like, that was a response to an issue they had.
I think it's at least five years old they've been doing this.
Oh, they, okay, so it wasn't just a, okay.
I think it's been a few years since they've had this.
And they did it, did they do it because of the year we had all the snow, and they...
I'm not sure there are reasons why.
Okay. Do we know how it works? Out of curiosity.
We have everyone's calendars, so we didn't call all the schools. We went online, we grabbed their calendars, and we created this.
I'm just curious to know if anyone knows how it, you know...
I can call the superintendent, geez, but we don't.
I'm sure nobody wants to do it.
And the interesting thing is that, you know, being part of the Blackstone Valley for some time, as Auburn is, if it was in the last five years, it was pretty much a non-event, because no one else jumped on board and said, this is a great idea. So, we can do a little bit more research. I know from the other comments, and one of the calendars that we proposed last year when we put three calendars forward for consideration, one of our calendars under consideration was to have a longer February weekend, to have either a Tuesday off or the Friday before, and the same in April, so that we didn't necessarily have a March, but we had long weekends in February, longer weekends in February, like four or five days, including the weekend, and the same in April. So, we picked up some school time with that. Not well-received by the other comments. Not well-received at all, and no one said yahoo, let's go for that one. No shortage of, don't get rid of February because we like to ski, but, you know, April's okay, because we don't usually go on vacation in April. Definitely not a March, because that's not going to work for everyone. So, it was very much random in terms of the responses, and nothing that we could concretely say 70% of the other comments were this. And again, if I were to say what was the most popular other comment, it was, can you do something with the professional development days? Anywhere from, you don't need any professional development to get them all out and just put the kids in school, so.
Is there a mandatory number of professional development days that you have to have?
So, the state, when ed reform came out in 1992, it was recommended that districts have five professional development days. And so, we were, and we remain true to that. And I would say it would have been very difficult for us to make the progress that we have made in so many of the areas that we have made progress in, had we not had those days to work collaboratively. days to work collaboratively with our professional staff. When I look at some of the schools, I don't know how they're able to do the work that they do with only two professional development days. So this isn't about the number of days that we have in our calendar, because three of those five days are already outside of the school calendar, right? Three of them, yeah. One of them is a teacher return day by contract, so they're in their rooms and meeting with building administration. And then we have a district day outside of that calendar. So I think we still have three more in the calendar, which we could then try to pull outside of the student calendar.
So we tried that two years ago, correct? Didn't we have that?
We tried that.
How did that work?
It had mixed reviews. The elementary teachers were okay with it. Middle, I feel like I'm doing Goldilocks in three years. Middle school was okay. High school was not happy with it at all. So one of the things we've talked about is, you know, if we want our students to embrace blended learning and virtual learning, is there any possibility that we could launch our own virtual learning school, if you will? And I know Michelle Shepherd about seven or eight, seven years ago now, was really excited about this notion. And Greg has worked through the PD committee to explore those options, and we've done some great things with that. We've provided additional PD options for teachers. But you still need them to be together, to have what unfortunately we don't do enough of because of social media, and that's to sit across the table.
And have a conversation.
And have a conversation. And to do the work, to do the work together. And that's what this, that's what this time affords. I also know, and Sarah can speak to this, and certainly Tim from a building perspective, the building administration needs to have time to work with their teachers on a variety of social, emotional issues, of curriculum and programming issues. So they're important days.
Paul.
So just curious, and this surprised the heck out of me. Last Friday was Veterans Day. And I had jury duty in the Massachusetts State Courts, and they had judges, and they had bailiffs, and they had attorneys, and it clearly wasn't, as far as they were concerned, a legal holiday at all. It was, I mean, in fact, one judge talked about the fact that she was a veteran and was working that day. I mean, we, I'm sure it must be built into the collective bargaining deal, but it's not, apparently, it's not hard and fast.
It's the eleventh.
Oh, it was a Saturday?
If it's a Saturday, then it's observed.
It's one of those holidays that is the day that it is, like July fourth.
Well, we're giving it off on the twelfth.
But I think then, if you look online, if it falls on a Saturday, then people get Friday. If it falls on a Sunday, then it's Monday.
I'm just wondering if it's a bargainable day that we could maybe get back. And, you know, I mean, it's just a, you know, a little bit later, they get the long weekend for Thanksgiving. It's not a, you know, you wonder how desirable a day off it is versus a day late June.
I don't know, I enjoy sleeping past six o'clock.
I would suggest, except for a few, and I think they even caved at the last...
What's going to happen next year, too?
Was that most of the district closed. And it's interesting because that happened, and then I had heard NPR take this up for discussion, and their comment was that by maybe state law, the workforce is entitled to a day to celebrate Veterans Day. And that was a legal holiday for the workforce. So I don't know how, you know, everybody's got an opinion, it's sort of like the other box in the surveys. So I don't know what the standard is on that, and we should probably find out if we're to take some movement.
I mean, the Massachusetts law system was working. No doubt about it.
Veterans Day for the high school kids is like the day that they can go visit all the local schools, because all the colleges are open, but we're closed. So it's something.
In Massachusetts, you can defer your jury duty for up to a year, and you can actually, you pick the date. I picked that date on purpose. Really very much assuming that, you know, there wouldn't be court that day. Spent seven hours in the courthouse in Worcester.
I was just looking to see in twenty twenty, because sometimes it skips, it jumps to the next.
On the list of Massachusetts legal holidays?
Yeah.
How do the courts not follow Massachusetts legal holidays?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a Massachusetts, I think, because even like, I get confused because I was like, oh, I'm going to work on Friday, and I, someone said, oh, you better check the train schedule. I checked for the holiday train schedule, and it was Saturday, so they didn't have any special schedule for Friday.
Well, something to look into.
So in two thousand nineteen, Veterans Day is on a Monday, because it's the eleventh, and it's recognized on the Monday. And Veterans Day, like Fourth of July, would probably be an annual discussion just as to whether or not we were going to move that date, which certainly we could take up for consideration when we look at the calendar as we're talking about these other issues. We can check with council and see what council says. Interesting point.
You would really torpedo the South Row Veterans Day Parade, which is populated mainly by Boy Scouts and Royal Army.
That's right, it would decimate it. Could we update this part? Yeah, I'm just curious.
I think it's up to the communities to how they celebrate it on. If you look online, they, if it falls on a Saturday, then communities can close. On a Friday, if it falls on a Sunday, they close on Mondays.
But every school district takes Veterans Day off?
Pretty much.
Do we know that? I guess is my question.
So when we look at the federal holidays for eighteen, I mean, I guess we can look at this every, on November, but we can ask legal counsel and come back with a decision because I think it, you can go to five different websites and get five different answers. So I think the best thing for us to do is look and at least get an answer to that question because it's situationals every year. And we could make a decision that every time it's on a Saturday or Sunday, we don't have a Monday or a Friday off, and as part of our calendar discussions, I mean, we could take that position so that it isn't something we discuss every year. It's just, if it's on a Sunday, like it is next year, then we are not taking the day off on Monday if legal counsel, or Friday if legal counsel advises that that's acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, and it's just, you know, do they, would they prefer to get out a day early in June, or, you know, do they like that Friday or Monday in November, a week before Thanksgiving? I don't know, it's a thought. It's a, it could be negotiable, I guess.
Some of the other comments was keep them in every day for a hundred and eighty days in a row and leave them out of the pack. Don't let them out for any reason.
That's right. So much for Kathy's legal.
That's right. Send them to school.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other, were there any other points of discussion of the combined meeting that we should cover? Make the assumption that we have not watched the tape.
No one watched the tape?
Just made that assumption.
I think the discussion was about, is the data compelling enough to make a change in terms of the percentage of folks who feel strongly one way or the other? And when something is in the calendar, it's like, it's taking something away. We also had a very lengthy conversation about how we look at the degree to which the religious observance is in fact observed, and whether it suggests that it be observed in a way that would prohibit students from coming to school. And so that we've looked at many, many, many resources. And the best resource, I think, that we found was from Washington State University, which really articulated, well, on this day, some folks or this particular group felt that on certain days, people couldn't go to work. You know, it's just, that's how you observe that holiday. Unfortunately, there are no shortage of sites as well that has this information, and you can look at five different sites, and they all change. They all say something very different. So I think the discussion was more, at some point in time, there was a decision to put these things in our calendar. Is there a compelling reason to, you know, these days in the calendar, is there a compelling enough reason to remove them? And I also think that the conversation has somewhat strayed one way or the other with respect to what is the purpose of changing the calendar? Is it about equity? In which case, the question was asked, who else has contacted either my office or the school committee, or, you know, what other groups, what other sects have been here in the audience? And, you know, were they local or not local? And so we had that conversation, and the answer, in case everyone's riveted and wants to know, was zero. We were contacted by two religious affiliations, both were out of Massachusetts, so no local. And since that presentation and our many discussions and surveys, I really haven't received any calls at Central. That doesn't mean there aren't folks out there that have something that they want to share, they just haven't decided to share it yet. We also spent a little bit of time looking at what the law says, and most recently came up with some language that would be considered policy, because when we've, we've taken up this conversation, a big piece of the conversation has been maybe inequities in terms of how students who may take the day off be received and or treated in terms of accountability for assignment and tests and things like that. So we've taken that very seriously and put some language together, knowing that the discussions go hand in hand. Okay, so if we do this, then what? How does that affect the students? So we actually brought some language forward to policy last night. Combined policy was last night, and we'll have some language to bring forward at the December meeting, to review at the combined meeting, that will basically provide that guidance for all teachers. So it's not a mystery, it's not arbitrary, and it's equitable. And I spoke with Principal Walsh earlier, and she graciously has granted me the okay to attend a department chair meeting to try to get feedback from the staff to see whether or not they can give us some guidance in terms of what's acceptable, because it does mostly impact the high school.
So just a couple of things. One of the things for the policy that would be helpful is that we just currently have off for Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, Good Friday, but there are a lot of other holidays that the kids may not be out from school, such as Passover or other holidays. But, you know, they'd be impacted on whether they get their work done, and they're not even absent from school that day. So there's a need of that policy regardless of whatever decision is made, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things that it's just impossible to... And the, and the practice is that it doesn't involve missing school. And one of the things that we talked about at the policy meeting, that I was surprised to have was some of the holidays that were supposed to be not a work day. So I ran home, asked my resident.
I'm not going in.
Asked my resident expert, and he said, oh, yeah, yeah, you're not supposed to work that day. And I said, yeah, but we do, it's like, no, but this is a reform, we're, you know, reform and some conservative, and maybe some conservatives take the two off, two days off. But, and so one of the things, and so like from an Orthodox perspective, they would definitely have that, but we don't have an Orthodox community anywhere near us. So, I mean, I think you need, and when we talked about the districts that have a holiday that take the religious holidays being close to Boston, and I think it has to do with the Jewish community and where the Jewish community resides, because, you know, they'll, people will reside near a temple, like there's a temple. Or once their community gets big enough, in France, it's like, when we joined the temple in Westboro, it was only in existence for ten years, and they met in a church for many years, you know, and then they finally had their building. So they kind of grow as the community grows. But, so I think, you know, taking into the consideration the, the fact that we have a conservative and a reformed temple in Westboro, there's other temples that aren't in, does it, in Ashland and Framingham, you know, all these areas that have the days off. And, and I think that impacts, you know, what, what is kind of how the practice is. And so I just wanted to just keep in mind that just because something says that it's refraining from work, isn't necessarily how the people who reside in this area. There certainly could be people who are from the conservative to a Orthodox upbringing who would, you know, refrain from work on Passover. So just wanted to point that out, is the conservation of where we are. And I think our communities, last time I checked, the North Row, South Row school districts, they, next to Westboro, that's the, they're the largest, we have the largest number of students in the religious school that Congress should be national on in Westboro. So, so next to Westboro, in which the temple is located, you know, our community's a second, second amount of children. So that's, you know, how many people it's going to affect if we make a change is also something to consider.
I'm looking at the, this survey and everything, and I mean, there's no school system in the state that does better than Wayland, year after year after year, in terms of how well they perform and what their marks are. The more they get away with giving no professional development days, and they pick, I mean, as a result, as compared to us, they'd be picking up five days off their calendar. Is there, is there some prevailing wisdom as to what it is that they're doing, that they don't need to do that?
They also never close for snow days, like never.
I was just consulting with my cohort. Guess it was a little bit louder than I imagined. Just to ask you, so I believe that there were some significant contract issues. And sometimes, I won't say it's the wisest thing that happens when that, when there are those kinds of issues. In lieu of pay, the days go away. Or in, in order to provide compensation throughout the negotiation period, these days are bargained away. So I know myself, having been in a couple districts, when times were tight, the professional development days were eliminated in order to provide compensation for the teachers. And so in some cases, and I think this happened just in our neighborhood, Shoesbury, they bargained some of the days away, and they put them back. So Shoesbury had a shortage of PD days, and some of those professional development days were removed at one point or another, and they struggled with trying to meet the objectives and, and all those mandates that we need to meet, and to deal with all of the issues that come our way. And they are now, as you can see, back to five point five, and they were down considerably. So looking at it, I think, has more to do with the realities of the community, and, and not necessarily because it was, it was expedient for educational reasons. And so I would, I would like to go check on that number historically.
If you could, I mean, it's hard to believe that Wayland was hurting for money to the point where they had to bargain away five professional development days. I mean...
So I'll do some historical... So I'll do some historical research.
They do recall some contentious issues with some of their contracts, but they performed really well as a district.
Yes, they do. So, so one thing that I sort of noted is, because, you know, we talked about we're right on that cusp, and it does seem like, and I think at one point, somebody was making the argument that, oh, you know, everyone around us is getting rid of them. And it really is a split, like, we really are on the cusp. It's not that everybody's getting rid of them, and it's not that everybody has them. It's like, our neighbors are just about half and half. So we really are in that, on that cusp of yes versus no. So I think our anticipation and expectation is that we would like to hold a vote, so that we could vote a calendar for our constituents at the next combined meeting, which is in December. So that being said, if there's any other, you know, questions or data that you want in order to make an informed decision, or, you know, just anything else, like the questions that have come up here tonight, you know, we're going to look at the PD, you know, possible rearrangement of PD days, et cetera, but that's our hope. It's not a commitment, because if something comes up and we have more, you know, more questions or whatever, that's fine, but our expectation is that we'll have a vote at the December combined meeting. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Any other questions, concerns, requests?
We have a little homework.
A little bit.
Kathy has some interest in Auburn's history, and we want to know what is up in Maryland. So we'll be back with some information.
Well, with Auburn, I mean, technically, you know, so Monday's always President's Day, right? And if you throw in a professional development day, then you only have to...
You can make it to...
You can give a February vacation with only taking three days off, but I don't know if that's what they do. Do they, unless they...
Like, right.
I mean, technically, it can be done. They may not be that special.
Just to follow up, Greg's been busy online. He is paying attention, but he's also been busy online. And just found Secretary Galvin's...
I was confounded by Veterans Day.
So was I.
So this is interesting, because it's Secretary Galvin, Secretary of Massachusetts site, and...
So it is a legal holiday in Massachusetts. If it falls on a Saturday, it's observed on Saturday. So you don't get Friday off. If it falls on a Sunday, you observe it on Monday.
Oh, Sunday. Because you don't want to have the parades on...
If it falls on a Saturday, we could remove it from our calendar.
So you thought you would be until March.
So that means it's Sunday next year, we'll have Monday, I guess, right?
So you choose for Monday.
Well, I got three years down, I'm not going to...
Does that mean it's on Monday next year?
On Monday. Next year's on Monday.
It's on here, too. They just want to keep Sunday days rest.
The Saturday, I don't care. So we've got to gain a data share.
Which makes no sense, actually, but...
Just one of the things we could on the calendars, the fact that President's Day, it'd be great to indicate President's Day on the calendars, too.
Because that is a special holiday, right?
Right, yeah.
Good point. Yeah, maybe it could be annotated as a special holiday, since it's come up for discussion. We're, I mean, it's got, like, Boston Public Schools have to, they probably annotate them, right? So it's not, it shouldn't be that much work.
No, we'll just go to Boston Public's site, but use their language.
Yeah, but they have different, they have a couple more holidays.
They have, they list, yeah.
But they list what are federal, what are state, so, you know, just informational. All right, then moving on to the principal's report.
Well, for more exciting information. There has been a lot of excitement, there's been a lot of excitement at the high schools since we opened, not only with our administrative team, but all of the really phenomenal work that they have done since arriving, that they've accomplished. School spirit is high, you can feel it when you walk through the building. Kids are completely engaged, students are engaged, doing all kinds of exciting in-class and outside-of-class activities, and I think that our four musketeers are definitely, our four administrative members of this team are doing an extraordinary job, making our students feel comfortable. Our teachers are excited to have the kids actively engaged in the classroom and activities outside. My goodness, they've been to so many games in the last week, month, and they're all in and all there, and have been hosts to so many events for a brand-new team. They've just collaborated with the staff and connected with the kids and the parents, unbelievably so. So I know Sarah is going to definitely have a lot of enthusiastic things to share, but I did really want to say that again, I know I said it last month, but just a great, great start.
Appreciate that, thank you. Genuinely appreciate that. And thank you for the opportunity, because I am very excited, there's a lot going on. As promised, it's significantly shorter, but still very jimped. So, and, you know, for time, I don't want to read through, but I do want to point out some really fun and exciting moments. One of them was our choral students participating in the ACDA Festival. Beyond just the opportunity of going to UMass Amherst, which I graduated from, so I got to do the UMass, they get to interact with college students, with other individuals, with individuals in the field. There was one fun moment where they were singing with the host of Sing That Thing on PBS, and it's just very exciting for the students to have the opportunity outside the classroom walls and apply what they're learning in the classroom. So there's other things going on in the academics, and of course, I have to put my plug in for Legally Blonde. If I did not put my plug in for Legally Blonde, the children would let me know about it tomorrow. It is coming up on November 30th, the tickets are on sale, you can check in at the main office, they also have an online site, which is on Twitter and their Facebook, and that is an upcoming event, and we're very, very excited about it. In our athletics, as Superintendent Johnson said, yes, we are very excited for all of the extra games that we participated in. I am extremely ecstatic to talk about our field hockey successes. Not only do all of our athletes exemplify on and off the field wonderful behaviors, our parents get involved. And one of the recent games, the parents and students, student athletes, got up into the parent bridge, you know the one you see at like the little soccer games? They completely engage in it, and it was just that celebration of how amazing our student athletes are. And although, we did not win last night's game in the freezing cold, we walked away triumphant in an amazing season. And so, and you could see that, we had two athletic teams here tonight, our girls' basketball team and our gymnastics team volunteering at the Lions' dinner. So our athletes are all in, and they participate in all of our community events, which is extremely, extremely exciting. And we got to hear Fran Witten talk about that last week, or last month. On the second page, it's activities and clubs. And again, there is just club activity after club activity and experience. Two very exciting moments was, one, the Harbinger. Thirty years in its existence, it is the first time it's been nominated for the Columbia Scholastic Press Association's Crown Awards. That is the highest award that it could be nominated for in student press, and we are a finalist after 30 years. Completely exhilarating news for all of our students that can participate and do participate in the many forms of the Harbinger. And we hosted the Algonquin Radio for a lifetime broadcast last week, huge success, they were in the cafeteria, students could participate in it, they could request songs if they wanted to. Some of our students that are participating in the Algonquin Radio, under Ms. Doyle and Mr. Stain, they're going out to college to do this work. So they're getting a lifetime experience right here in college, in high school every single day. And the kids just enjoy it, it's that great way to express themselves through music and other forms of art. Our department update, many of us were here just this past Monday, the week before, for our National Business Honors Society. It's their fifth year in existence. We had 39 new members this year alone. The library was packed with students, community members, parents, one of the largest inductions that we've had. We have 49 members right now currently have all met and/or exceeded what it takes to be in the National Honors Business Society. And that is a true testament to our parent support, our community support, our amazing students, and our faculty members. Because they were here as well, always. Another exciting moment is the English department. I don't know if you've heard about this, in last year is when it started. The Algonquin Writing Center started out very small under Sarah Stein and Seth Zarnicki, two educators. They worked specifically with a small cohort of students to develop how to give peer-to-peer writing improvements, not just in English, that's where it's important. They're helping their peers become strong writers across content in college and beyond. And it's growing, it's massively growing. So you can kind of see some data on the side. For me, it's not about the numbers. It's about when I walk by the Writing Center during the day, before school, after school, there are kiddos in there, working with, as you heard some of our students earlier say, students they normally don't interact with, you know, working on how to develop in their writing, giving them the confidence to go on and use their writing skills across the different content areas. And they have an exciting trip coming up where the students will get what I would call professional development, because we were just talking professional development, in how to continue to help their peers now and beyond. So that's exciting work. Our fine arts, doing the plug for Legally Blonde again, I have to, they definitely made sure that I did that. But, one thing I wanted to point us to is that when our T-Hawks graduate, they don't forget Algonquin. We had a recent graduate go on to the University of Chicago and submitted a letter for Catherine Waters, who received the University of Chicago Educator of Excellence Award. Many educators are nominated through the college, and she won. And it's a true testament to the impact that our educators have on our students through the multiple programs that they experience here at Algonquin. Very, very exciting news. I had to point out the math team, they got third overall at the WPI Invitational Math Meet. And what was really exciting is that it's a collaboration with Melikan. One of our students, one of our teammates, not my student, one of our teammates, was a Melikan student, eighth grader, perfect score in the individual part of the math competition. And it's just a great collaboration between the middle school and the high school, which you also see happen when we host our eighth grade visits, which Tim was a huge supporter of, he ran both the events, working with Guidance, they recently happened. And on that note, speaking of Guidance, I do want to say that tomorrow, we have our Day for Change. It's when our ninth graders work on that community aspect, building that family aspect, what it means to be a good citizen, to be kind, to support each other through their four years of high school. It's something that they look forward to, all of our ninth graders will participate in tomorrow, as well as some of our educators and our Guidance Council, so another upcoming event. Any questions? You can see I'm excited, I love it.
I have a comment, a couple of comments, actually. One, first of all, kudos to the Harbinger, because I too would be a UMass grad, and with a journalism degree, so I have a real appreciation for what goes into that, that's quite an achievement. And also on the field hockey, I happened to go to the game where they won, I guess it was the conference final, and was impressed not only with the kids' performance, they won it in the last minute, but also all the other kids who were there supporting. And I guess there was, I think there was a girls' soccer game after the field hockey game, and there was just a ton of kids there, you know, supporting both of them, and that was also a pretty cold night, so it was great to see.
It was frigid, it was frigid, it was right before the Arctic freeze. Yes.
It was chilly. Anyway, it was just great to see, you know, not only the team do so well, but all the support they had.
Thank you, yes. Agreed.
It's always good to hear all about what's going on with the kids, and my kids were both involved in the Harbinger, so I know, I'm glad to relay the information, the honor. They always, that's one you were saying with the kids, they always remember, you know, what they did here. And, you know, my daughter's always like, so proud of the kids, you know, and she doesn't even know any of them anymore. But it's like, once you're involved in something, it kind of sticks with you, so it's great that we have all these activities, and I'm really excited about the Writing Center. I think that's a great skill set that the kids are getting, and, you know, my kids are only exposed to it in college, and, you know, so it's really, to get into that habit of going and asking help, because that's, by the time they're in college, they may not go and ask for help. But, you know, to get the kids seeing it all the time, and then, and knowing that go to ask for help is not a bad thing. So, and it's great for the kids that are doing it, and that are being the mentors, so to speak. It's great to hear that, that we're open that prepared.
I mean, it just really is astounding when you look at all the different things that are going on in this building and on the field. And it's not even in a few short months, I mean, this is not, this is since last meeting. And it's just astounding. And even if you have kids in high school, you have no appreciation for all the other stuff that's going on that your kids aren't even involved in. So thank you very much for this report, it was, it's just mind-boggling, and just, I continue to be proud of our school, even though I don't have kids in it.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then moving on to enrollments.
Enrollments are in the packet, we do have our NEDC numbers, they just came in, so we'll be taking a look at those in December. And I think Tim actually did a great analysis, so we were a little surprised that we had increased. And usually, the committee asks, you know, why did we see an increase of, you know, X amount of students? And I think what we determined was, it was for a number of reasons, whether it was students returning from private schools, an uptick in enrollments in our communities, a huge spike in Northborough over the summer at the K-8 level, so some of that moved forward. And it might have been a couple kids returning.
Out of state.
Yeah, so it isn't one particular reason that we saw, you know, an increase. And I know usually, we ask that question. So we're holding steady, we're, you know, up from what we projected this time last year, and we'll continue to be mindful of the enrollments as we move through the budget season. And next week, we'll take a look at, I know last month, we distributed all of those longitudinal numbers that we started tracking about three years ago, and they're always interesting to see how close we hit the mark. And we use a number of variables to keep an eye on those numbers, so that's here for review. Number one, also in the packet, this is something, that's an event, I know Cheryl's, ah, she rolled her eyes, she's like, "You're not going to say this again, are you?" But, we, before we came over to our meeting tonight, I said, "Cheryl, you've got to be doing a dance here, a little bit." And I said, "Oh, my goodness, since 2005, how many meetings have you gone to?" And she reminded me that 30 years ago, I remember Cheryl sitting across the table next to Dennis DeSalvo, former superintendent, being there in another capacity, taking notes and being very much an integral part of what was going on at school committee. So not just in her role as business manager, but certainly even well beyond those years, she was ever-present at our school committee meetings, and has been an integral part of everything that we do, every aspect of what we do as a school system, to keep our school system running as smoothly as we can, and providing all those resources for those 1,474 outstanding students and all of our teachers. This is her last school committee meeting. And yes, there will be cupcakes. The cupcakes this evening will be chocolate, which is Cheryl's favorite, but with maroon and gold. And, you know, how do you thank someone for everything that they've done and done so well as Cheryl has over the years? She will be missed, she's a fabric of Central Office, but moreover, a part of every aspect of our district. So she gets to ask, tonight, a vote to approve until audited.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
We have our monthly expenditure report as of the end of October, and we have our statement of revenue also.
And what would you like them to do with this, Cheryl?
Approve until audited, please.
Thank you.
Well, I think that since every meeting that I've been here, Paul always has a question about the statement of revenue, that on this particular occasion, you cannot let us down.
So I don't really have a question as much as a kudos. 51.76% of the anticipated parking fees have already been collected, that's, I mean, tell you, that's kind of magic, that's very good, so. Well done, well done. And I'm positive the number must be perfectly accurate, because of course, it's been created by our dear friend Cheryl, so.
Thank you.
We'll miss you. So I move we accept these numbers until they're audited.
Moved by Paul Busska, seconded by Lynn. Any questions, other comments? All those in favor?
That passes unanimously, as it always does, Cheryl. And I would like to just...
Well done.
Well, thank you very much.
Times three. All right, well, how else can we heck... All right, well, how else can we heckle her? Statement of, we didn't.
Yeah, that was a true. Budget priorities. So we have not voted on the budget priorities as of yet, and if they look the same, they are the same. And even after much conversation about how we may want to change our focus, we do come back to the fact that these are very much overarching priorities. And for the kinds of conversations we are having this year with respect to specific requests, these priorities continue to do well by the work that we have. We are in our third year of, fourth year of our instructional resources replenishment, if you will, and we have really stayed the course on that. So, you know, if there's a question as to whether these priorities really help guide our work, they definitely do. And that's allowed us, again, to continue what we wanted to see happen over time, and that is to bring our instructional resources up to current standards, and we've been able to do that. And yet again this year, as we move the budget forward, I know Sarah and her team has been working on, at crunching numbers and being mindful of what our priorities are. So I think, you know, these are good to go as they stand in terms of the conversations we've had. So we need a vote.
Paul?
So I would move we accept the budget priorities for FY 2019, as admitted.
Second, moved by Paul Butka. Seconded by Lynn. Any questions, discussions, comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. But it counts.
No significant additions to this calendar. It will certainly grow into a front side and a backside in short order. And in the month of December, tomorrow evening, the Subcommittee for Capital will be meeting, and the month of December, we can probably anticipate a regional budget Subcommittee. So there will be a doodle poll in your e-box soon, through that date.
Do we have enough budget Subcommittee members from here?
Oh, I'm glad you asked. So I just happen to have a whole stack of these. Probably only one would be necessary. So our budget, operational budget Subcommittee is Mr. Butka.
Yeah.
Mrs. Winter, and Ms. Key. And that represents three members, and we've only ever had three, so we're in good shape.
Okay.
Just to review, capital planning is Mr. Butka, Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Cress is not on the committee this year, so we could use a third member.
For the meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
I mean, so.
And then you can.
Can I see you raise your hands?
Yes.
All right.
And since you're also on policy, bring a thermos, because we're going to be meeting on policy after that, so.
You know what? I'll bring food tomorrow.
Yes.
How? Put those over.
It's not.
It's not?
No. We have our, we have two pasta parties left, tomorrow and next Wednesday.
I was wondering if they were leftovers from the last time. It's not. It's good they're.
Oh, my gosh. All right.
The last two.
I know. Even more reason to come to the meetings.
Yeah, I'm going to thank her for announcing that, because we'll have a corn.
We will.
We have pasta, we'll have a corn.
That's right.
And, Cheryl, do you want me to move forward with solar feasibility?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So we've had some Phase One conversations. Ty and Bond did come through with the results. Mr. Desmond is on, right? I keep imagining you're there, so I think you are there at the meetings.
True, I was there.
You were there. Because I put you on committees before that you weren't any part of. And great news, it was a great presentation from Ty and Bond to all of the member, members of the working group, as well as Southborough and Northborough Town. We had a few questions that we had to check on in our communities in terms of bylaws and regulations, and we seem to have clear sailing in terms of our moving forward to Phase Two, which is basically a deeper dive into the details and the data of the original analysis that they had provided. The regional high school is moving forward for consideration for both canopy and rooftop mounts. We don't have the specific breakout of the percentage of returns that they projected for solar, and that's one of the things we've asked. For example, in the aggregate, they provided a percentage of return on investment moving forward with solar, and we want to know how much of that is attributable to the roof mounts or to the canopy. Lot of conversations yet to be had about whether we want to move forward with the canopy, solar, and Phase Two will include Ty and Bond basically centering and focusing on five installations. No determination yet has been made in terms of allocation with Northborough and Southborough. The schools have decided that it's wonderful that the towns have worked with us on this, but if we're ready to move forward, we're going to move forward at our, you know, as quickly as we can. So with the information that we received around the bylaws, that was the last piece of information we were basically waiting for. So the next step is for me to reach out to Ty and Bond, ask them to take a deeper dive into the data, help us center on the five sites, the region being one of them, and move forward. A lot of questions came up in terms of what we can include in the RFP, and basically, it was, in a nutshell, you're asking for this, you can put in whatever you want in the RFP, and it's up to the vendors to determine whether they're going to bid. And so in some cases, our facilities in five to ten years may need a roof, so our goal is to roll that into the RFP. The returns will be less, but our roof will be in place without necessarily going to the town for a warrant article. So a lot of creative dialogue, very exciting. Phase Two will launch as soon as we get a price in terms of what that's going to mean for us. But all three are still planning to move forward. So the sun may shine yet, and create some revenues in the process.
So the canopies are the ones that go on the parking lot, correct?
Yes.
So Ashland High School just did that. Like they, in the past year, they have canopy now in there on the left side of their high school. And it actually looks fine. Looks like a parking, kind of like a parking garage.
REI has it, and it's nice in the summer, because you're literally parking in shade.
Yeah.
And I imagine it's nice in the winter, because.
You're into it, yeah.
It's difficult for plowing, and that's one of the concerns that we've had. What's the cost increase? Because now they have to navigate.
All the poles.
Yeah, all the poles. But Ty and Bond did address that as well. The roofs slant in, they melt in the middle, you know, they had all kinds of answers, so it's exciting.
Maybe they don't have to plow into them?
Wow, did you, I mean, you were at the presentation. It was pretty detailed.
It was an excellent summary.
Yeah. Hey, that's it. Must be, yep.
They're moving along.
More to follow.
Policy Development and Distribution, second reading.
I don't think there were any changes to the first reads, but.
Does anybody have any upon further review kinds of questions?
No.
Yeah. If nobody does, shall we take a vote on accepting this?
Thanks. I move that we accept the election of officers, B-240, new policy, the B-260, use of electronic messaging by school committee members, and B-310, the liaison appointments.
Second. Moved by Lynn, seconded by Paul Butka. Any further discussion?
Okay, I'm going to admit that I haven't read this second one here. Electronic messaging, but can somebody paraphrase for me what these chromatic looking changes mean or do?
Which ones?
I mean, it seems radically different from the old versus the new, and I just, anything of particular note is it's just being kind of rewritten in a different kind of format.
Just sort of simplifying the, just to the essence of it instead of all the detail that was there before, with this, these are written, a lot of things have changed.
It's not that radically different.
No, I think we just clarified.
It was fine, yeah.
We had some redundancy, and we wanted to eliminate that.
Yeah.
Okay. So just all this goes away.
You cut to the chase.
Yeah, we just simplified, a lot of the policies.
Yeah.
It's on you. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Great. That's exciting. That's the most policies we've had move through this quickly.
Yeah, we've been a policy block.
We are.
Okay. So now we're on a roll. Audience sharing. Anyone at the table? I don't have, I'm not an audience anymore. I don't, like, I don't go to anything, because I don't have kids here, so.
I know.
Yeah. Kathy, how's football?
So football is, you know what, they're doing, they're actually doing great. They don't have a good record, but they're really positive, and, you know, it's been great, besides Friday's game where it was twenty degrees. And I think we had like twenty people there, because everyone knows that boys' soccer.
Oh, right.
But all those, you know, all those sports here have been doing really well. It's been fun. It's been fun watching all the kids at the different activities. They're enjoying it this year.
How's the Westboro game looking?
Hopefully good.
Hopefully it won't snow.
No, they're doing good. It's good here.
I'm looking forward to going to Legally Blonde.
I'm excited, too.
It's the best night.
It's like the best, it's the best five dollars spent to go to a show. It's fantastic.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, these shows are great. Okay, then, moving on to personnel, Distribution and Personnel Report.
No staff changes.
For the first time in out-of.
With the number of staff we have, to have that in print is miraculous.
Communications, distribution of the, oh, Harbinger. It, oh.
Oh, big change.
Wow.
Yes, very different.
That is very different. New year, new changes. That would be tied to college.
Exactly.
Absolutely, wow. All right, the fourth reading.
He was hefty, too.
I know. The paper, the paper is better quality, even. You may tell them that we all missed.
Absolutely. They'll be excited.
I will add that there was an additional communication that was on the desk, and I want to thank the administration for being so proactive and prompt in distributing a mid-year exam schedule and also a final exam schedule. Oftentimes, when the students are coming and going at midterm and final exam, it's not yet known until they're already on or off campus, and I think to see this is a step forward. And really pleased that the administration moved so proactively to have those conversations at the school. So that is in your packet.
I just have a question, actually. Just came to mind. What is the status of the Student Advisory Committee? Are we going to be meeting with them at all?
We do have a member, John Berry. Student Council just had their election. We just haven't had a chance to pull them together yet, but they are still alive and well, and will be probably creating a schedule soon.
I know there was always discussion about the final exam, so it prompted my memory.
Okay, and approval, what, oh, sorry, John.
I have a question through you to Sarah. Is the flexible learning block, is that something new this year?
That is, that is not new.
That isn't new.
It's just a structured area where the students can go and get support and help and have that place to study. And the asterisk means that, you know, some of our students have, like, senior privileges, so they don't necessarily have to attend that flexible learning block.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, then approval of bills and payrolls. Cheryl.
Actually, they're down the other end. I think we need a drumroll for this one.
I know. Is this, well, is this, yeah, this is the last of the three, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
She's got a smile on her face.
And agenda items for next month. ELL update, FY '19 budget, NASDAQ enrollment projections.
No, just a reminder that this meeting will follow combined.
Right, next month is combined.
And combined is right at this point scheduled for six o'clock.
I adore you all. Please. Are there any presentations at?
At combined?
At combined?
Not on the combined agenda. Yes, an update from Christina Smith on the, on her start time research. No recommendations, no findings, just a check-in for her with the committee.
But no, like.
That's March, no. No, no guest appearances. And the school calendar.
School calendar. Yes. School calendar, Christina, and some policies.
Some policies.
Some policies.
Substance abuse policy.
Eat joridi that morning.